Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this evening's meeting to order and like to welcome you all. My name is Ada Rosemarin. I'm the Chair of the School Committee. And we have with us school committee members both in person and online. And we have Superintendent Sheehan and Assistant Superintendent Guth McKinney with us. So we're really making use of the hybrid format. So we have some of us joining you in person and some live, some online. And I've been informed that there are about 10 or so people.
Fourteen.
Fourteen folks online, and we have about a dozen people here in the room. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out on this miserable night. It's great to have you here. We also have with us our Milton Public Schools team that are heading up our Safe and Supportive Schools effort for Milton Public Schools with our strategic plan. We have Principal of Glover School Karen McDavid and Adjustment Counselor, is that right? Adjustment Counselor at Milton High School Jenny Beliveau. And in addition, we have Stephanie O'Keefe, who's a Communications Coordinator for Milton Public Schools, who will be helping us tonight with facilitating the meeting. So, and thank you also to Milton Access for arranging and staffing this meeting. This is not an easy task, doing these hybrid meetings. And we really appreciate their support in making this happen, as well as the Council on Aging for allowing us to meet in this space. So tonight, we are looking forward to sharing some information and look forward to a dialogue with the community about our Safe and Supportive Schools efforts. As many of you may know, that is one of the three pillars of our strategic plan. And a very important one tonight is the second in a series of four community forums that we're holding. Our first one was on the first pillar, which was personalized learning. Tonight, on Safe and Supportive Schools, we'll have one in January on Equity in Learning, which is our third pillar of the strategic plan. And we'll have another one in February about our budget. And we've put these additional community forums on the school committee calendar this year to have an opportunity for more of a dialogue. Whereas our regular school committee meetings, there's only time for citizen speak, which is kind of a one-way, people coming to tell us what's on their minds, but there's not an opportunity for back and forth. And we really wanted to open up the avenues of communication by doing these forums. And I hope that you'll all enjoy this evening, and we're looking forward to it. So tonight, we will explain about what Safe and Supportive Schools are and how we are working to implement that in Milton Public Schools and how that is helping our students and to help you understand why it's important and helping us to achieve excellence in our district. We will be presenting, Principal McDavid and Ms. Beliveau will be presenting a brief presentation, about a half an hour. We have an hour and a half set for this meeting. They will be doing a brief presentation, about a half an hour. And then after that, we will have time for questions and comments and dialogue. And we will have folks be participating in that dialogue, both in person here at the microphone. And folks are welcome to take turns coming up to the table when you have something you'd like to share. And likewise, on Zoom, folks on Zoom who would like to participate should just raise their hands in Zoom, and then you will be promoted to a panelist when it's your turn to speak. And we'll do a couple in person, then a couple online. We'll kind of rotate back and forth that way, and hopefully that will work for us. I think that's pretty much it for introduction. So I will now just turn it over to Ms. Beliveau and Ms. Concanon. Pardon me, Ms. McDavid.
I think I did that right.
You did it.
Awesome. Fabulous. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Jenny Beliveau. I'm one of the Adjustment Counselors at Milton High School. And myself and Karen McDavid have taken the lead with our SEL Advisory Team for the district. And so we've really taken the lead in, you know, trying to support this pillar that we have for the strategic plan for Safe and Supportive Schools. So we're definitely excited to be here tonight just to talk about Safe and Supportive Schools, to talk about what we're already doing within the schools right now, and also to talk more about what we're hoping to be doing in the near future. So really, to talk about Safe and Supportive Schools, we first want to say, you know, what is it? So Safe and Supportive Schools foster a safe, positive, healthy, and inclusive whole-school learning environment. It supports students holistically in key areas of development and integrates services and aligns the many student support initiatives that aim to address particular areas of need in our schools. So there's definitely major critical components of Safe and Supportive Schools. And some of those are access to culturally, linguistically, clinically, age, and developmentally appropriate practices and services. And these are all just integrated into a welcoming school environment and culture. So why are we doing this? So there's a lot of different rationale around why we're really integrating social-emotional learning into Milton Public Schools and the importance of that. So I'm actually going to have Karen come up, and she will take the lead on this part.
True confession, A, I have no voice. I'm sorry, like every child. At Glover School, I also have the same whatever, but I'm not contagious. True confession, I'm the Glover Principal, right? I am not self, I am no self-professed expert of SEL. But I've been in education 20 years, and I know that students learn better when they feel safe and they feel supported. And so it's a passion of mine. My doctoral work is in this world, particularly focusing on early intervention and support of students at the elementary level. And so, you know, I just want to say that upfront. Like, I'm not an SEL expert. I'm just really committed to making sure that the kids in my school and the kids in every school feel safe and supported. But we know that there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of conversation right now about, you know, focus on things like Safe and Supportive Schools and equity and the potential for that distracting from our job, which is teaching and learning. And our job is teaching and learning, and that is a fact. So I thought I would take just a minute to kind of share a little bit from multiple sources, because we know that a single source is not good enough to share. So we have sort of multiple perspectives on SEL and on the importance of Safe and Supportive Schools. And I just want to share a little bit of that, because I think it provides a great foundation for what Jenny's going to do, which is to tell you what we're doing here in the Milton Public Schools to make every child feel safe and supported. This first bit is from CASL. And if you know anything about SEL, CASL is synonymous with SEL. It's the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. They coined the phrase SEL more than two decades ago. And they've really, you know, sort of grown it from a promising theory to an essential part of education. CASL's nonprofit, and they are nonpartisan. And I'm going to tell you some statistics. And if you're like me, your instant question is, where'd you get that information? And how'd they find that out? And is it reliable? And was it triangulated? And all that good stuff. So I want to start by saying the statistics that I'm going to share come from multiple sources, but the primary source is a 2011. Yes, it's 2011, and I don't love that. But I'm also going to share some 2019 data. But it's a meta-analysis of 213 studies of school-based universal SEL programs. So the statistics that I'm going to share with you represent work with over 270,000 children in K through 12. Again, I will also share some statistics from 2017, which was a study that reviewed 82 different SEL programs, worked with 97,000 students, kindergarten through middle school, and followed those students six months to 18 years after the programs were completed. So you can see on the screen that all of these studies are finding that SEL is an essential component of academic achievement and that they are synonymous and that we cannot get our students to learn to the best of their ability if they don't feel safe and supported in their classrooms. So these studies, when they put them all together, they found that social-emotional learning boosts academics. All these studies put together indicated that academic performance increased by 11 percentile points when social-emotional learning was incorporated into the student's day. Also helps them improve mental wellness, helps students manage stress and depression, and improved their attitudes about themselves, about others, and about school. If you're a money person, you're looking at an ROI, right? You're looking at a return on investment. What are we putting our money into in the Milton Public Schools? And are we getting a good return on our investment? These studies put together found that there's an $11 return of benefits for every dollar invested in SEL. I hope nobody asks me how they calculated that, because that part I can't answer. So upfront, I'll tell you that. And then this is really important, right? We're creating, we're taking little people and creating the next generation of humans that's going to run this world. And so SEL supports lifetime outcomes, increased well-being up to 18 years later, and decreased likelihood of ever needing to receive public assistance. So then we think about post-school, right? What are we looking to do? We're looking to create experiences for students where they can go out into the world and be college and career-ready. 92% of employers say that the skills taught in SEL, such as self-management and decision-making and all of that good stuff, are equal to or more important than technical skills. 87% of parents, again, this is all those studies put together, believe that SEL is important in helping children navigate today's world. 76% of high schoolers say they want to attend a school that prioritizes SEL. 99% of school principals say SEL is critical. And I want to talk to the 1% who said it's not critical. 90% of teachers believe that SEL improves academics. And 99% of educators believe that SEL improves overall student outcomes. 73% of school counselors say that SEL is as important as developing academic knowledge for student success. And again, back to those employers, when we look at folks like Google, I just pulled a couple, Google, Allstate, Wall Street Journal, wanted employees who can shake hands and make small talk. The seven top characteristics of success at Google are all SEL-related, communicating, listening well, possessing insights into others, and having empathy. And, you know, there's a lot out there lately, more than I'm used to seeing, about SEL potentially being a distraction from anything else. And again, this is from CASL. But they are really trying to help educate that SEL boosts academic performance and deepens engagement with content. It's not a distraction. And it helps students understand different perspectives and share ideas, but it is not a way to teach students a specific political agenda. If you wanted to see a different source, this is a 2019 source from the Aspen Institute. And the publication is called "From a Nation at Risk." And if you remember the Nation at Risk report that came out that sort of spurred tremendous education reform in our country. This report is called "From a Nation at Risk to a Nation at Hope." And the insight at the heart of this report is that social, emotional, and academic development are inextricably linked. And there's a couple quotes on there that I won't read to you. But basically, the synthesis is, "Research shows that when schools help students build character and scholarship in concert, student achievement flourishes in class and in life." So that's another source that I would encourage anybody who's looking to learn more about to look at. CASL's a great place to go. The Aspen Institute is also a great place to go. And the last thing that sort of helps us with our rationale for why we're doing it is we follow our marching orders from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we have standards that we are held to teaching. And there are standards. There are SEL standards in the Massachusetts state standards. So here you can see that there are, you know, the child will be able to, in terms of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Especially with our little guys, our pre-K and K have their own special standards about approach to play and learning, things about initiative, curiosity, persistence, engagement, creativity, cooperation, problem-solving, organization skills, and memory. These are critical skills that our little guys are learning in school that they can't learn in other places, because they're not always surrounded by 24 other little people who they have to navigate and they have to negotiate with, and they have to share airtime and space and toys with. But it's not just for our little guys. It also, and this is the wordiest slide ever, and I apologize, because that's like Presentation 101. But if you want to know more, this is just to show you that it actually does carry all the way through. It doesn't just include our pre-K and K kids. At the elementary level, there's comprehension and collaboration standards that we are required to teach and meet about helping kids participate in collaborative discussions with diverse partners during daily routines and play, interacting with the group, taking turns, talking, listening to peers, waiting to speak until another person is done finishing, asking questions, waiting for an answer. And there's also standards around citizenship and civics. Teaching children that there are rules, and there are limits, and there are expectations, and that our job is to follow those rules and adhere to those limits and try to do what's expected. And then even all the way up into the secondary level. When you look at the standards that we are bound by at the secondary level, this is actually, these are 11th grade standards. And you can see it's still, you know, the same kind of SEL skills that we're looking for. Participating in collaborative discussions, working with peers to promote civil democratic discussions and decision-making, propelling conversations by posing and responding to questions and responding thoughtfully to diverse perspectives. So sort of, we just wanted to kind of root what we're going to share with you in terms of the good work that we are doing in the Milton Public Schools in fact. And the fact is that a lot of research has gone into this. And a lot of research says that this is important. And it's an important part of education, and it doesn't distract, but in fact enhances the work that we do, which is teaching and learning. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jenny, the real expert. And she's going to share some of the cool stuff that we're doing in the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you so much. I cannot say either that I'm an expert, but this is definitely something that I am incredibly interested in and work that I do all day, every day, with the students at the high school. So just before we really get into what we're actually doing, so essential elements of a Safe and Supportive School is that it supports all students, that we deepen their understanding, we advance equity, we exemplify cultural responsiveness, and that we're constantly reflecting and adapting. So what is our goal in the Milton Public Schools? So a lot of this within our goal really is what we're doing to educators and educating them. So we want all educators to learn, understand, and implement practices that are grounded in trauma-informed instruction and the five SEL competencies that we talked about, that it's embedded in their use across daily instruction. So this isn't, you know, adding an additional class that they're going to be doing. It's just constantly embedded in the work that they're doing every day. And that we're also monitoring for effective use and implementation to foster safe and supportive learning environments. So what have we accomplished? So this is the stuff that I love to talk about. So definitely, just to get in to everything that we already are doing, the few things that we've been really able to do the last couple of years and where we're hoping to move forward with this. So as far as Adjustment Counselors, we're really lucky. We have several Adjustment Counselors in the district. Within the elementary schools, each elementary school has a full-time Adjustment Counselor. Glover has two full-time Adjustment Counselors. We have three at the middle school and three currently at the high school, which is great. So in the last two years, we've really tried to boost some of the training that the Adjustment Counselors have had, specifically in these areas, especially, you know, with what's happened the last couple of years, really trying to focus on the importance of trauma and us being, you know, more aware of what some of our students are going through and how we can support them individually. So many of the Adjustment Counselors, we've been trained in trauma-informed strategies to reduce anxiety in students. We recently just attended a suicide-focused assessment and treatment training to really get, this was done by McLean, to really get the most upcoming important information on how we are assessing potential suicide and treatment for that. And then the practice of solution-focused therapy. So solution-focused therapy really is just a short-term, goal-oriented therapy. And so all of us have attended training on that as well. In addition to all of us being licensed counselors, and so we do have to attend our own trainings outside of Milton School time to make sure that we're up to all of our licenses as well. So trauma-sensitive schools accomplishments. So recently, we have taken, last year I was able to get a grant through BID Milton. And it's a three-year grant where we are focusing on transforming Milton Public Schools into what we call trauma-sensitive schools. So a trauma-sensitive school is basically one in that all aspects of the educational environment are grounded in us fully understanding trauma and understanding the impact of trauma and the impact that it can have on our students, the impact that trauma can have on our families, can have on ourselves as a staff member, and also the entire community. So last November, November 2021, all staff in Milton Public Schools attended a two-hour training that I did to really understand what trauma is. We talked all about what trauma is, what it could look like, how it impacts us, and really kind of those core areas of trauma that they should be looking for in some of their students. After they attended that training, we really did a data collection tool with all of our staff to say, are we ready for this? What do we feel like needs to happen in schools? What do we feel like is additional training that staff might need to have? What do we feel like we might need to do to change some of the policies and procedures that are already happening within the schools? So then we were able to take that data, and we came up with action plans for each of the schools. And one of the big action plans that kind of came out of that was that we really need to have SEL leadership within each of our schools. So recently, we identified two of our staff members at each of the schools, so 12 total across the district, that are really taking the lead in SEL. So with that, they're doing ongoing building-based professional development. They're, you know, gathering resources. They're being those go-to people that teachers and staff members can come to to talk about what they can do to be implementing more of the SEL within their classroom. All of them have been provided the Trauma Sensitive Classroom book, which we've been working on and kind of reading through and talking about different strategies that can be used at the schools. We're using some of that SEL data to inform instruction and intervention. And we're also implementing Calm Classroom this year. So many of our teachers have actually used Calm Classroom before, but we are really excited. MFE was actually able to support us this year in purchasing a district-wide Calm Classroom membership. So all staff, all staff at the middle school and the elementary school last month completed the two-hour training. And next week, all staff at the high school are going to be completing the two-hour training. And then we're going to be continuing to do, you know, PD throughout the year of how we're going to be using Calm Classroom in our classroom and how we can support that as we move forward. So what else have we accomplished? So with this, we were able to receive a grant, which has supported so much of this work that we've been able to do. So with that grant, we did update our Second Step curriculum and Second Step Bullying Prevention Unit. And Second Step is a program that's just used at the elementary schools. We've been using it for years, but there is an updated version of it. So we were able to get that, so that way that all elementary teachers are using the most up-to-date version of this. We also were able to purchase a program called Vape Educate. So this is a Tier Two intervention program that can be used if a student, specifically at the high school level, if a student is, you know, caught vaping, instead of, you know, traditional discipline practices, right, of giving them a detention or suspensions or things like that, we're actually able to have them participate in a Vape Educate program, which is an online class. I believe it's six hours, six sessions of the class that they come after school and they complete that Vape Educate, where they're really learning, you know, what are the dangers of vaping? What are some of the strategies, marketing strategies that, you know, that are being used on them in a sense to vape? What can they do instead of that? And really have some level of education and intervention that can be done. We also were chosen, this is recent, we were actually chosen to be part of the I Decide program, which I was very excited about as well, because there was a pretty long waitlist for it. So I Decide is actually a program through MGH. And it is a drug education curriculum program. Again, this is a Tier Two intervention. And this is something really, especially at the high school level, I've been hoping that we could get more of Tier Two intervention. And so basically, what this is, is someone does have an infraction given to them at the high school for some level of substance use. Again, instead of your typical, you know, suspension or detention or some of those practices that might not really solve the problem, I Decide is again, another program, education program that we can have them enroll in. So myself and five other educators are going in two weeks to MGH for a full-day training, so we can actually become I Decide educators to really learn this curriculum so that we can be doing it immediately with an individual if they need to be enrolled in the program, if administration and their families decide that they need to be enrolled in this program. It also actually gives them direct access, if they do need more of an intervention, it gives them direct access into counseling and potential treatment for a substance abuse problem through MGH. So we can actually directly refer them to that, and they can get support through MGH if needed. The Michigan Model for Health Curriculum, again, through this grant, we were actually able to purchase the Michigan Model Health Curriculum, which is, you know, a comprehensive health education, evidence-based curriculum that was provided for K through K, right? Not one. Pre-K. It is pre-K. Pre-K through 12. So this was given to all of our health teachers, who will be able to give this curriculum in the health classes. Youth Mental Health First Aid Training. So youth mental health first aid can really be given to any adult that's working with youth. It gives them basic training on key signs to be looking out for if they see any risky behaviors, if they see any potential concerns for mental health. And it teaches them how to interact with that youth. It teaches them the really important questions to ask the youth and also how to assist them in getting further help. So in January, we're actually going to have 30 of our educators across the district be attending the Youth Mental Health First Aid. So this isn't something that the counselors will necessarily be attending, because this is training that we've already had. But it is more for some of those teachers that really are having more of those individual one-on-one conversations with some of our higher-needs students. And we'll give them more of the tools that they need to be able to have some of these difficult conversations. The Intellispark SEL Screener. So this again is providing some of the data around the SEL competencies and giving us a better idea across each of the schools on how connected our students feeling, how are students feeling about their social relationships, their relationships with adults, and giving us overall data, but also some of that individual data. So our behavioral health teams, if we do have concerns about a student, we can look at some of that Intellispark data and say, well, this student doesn't feel connected. Or this student's having a hard time, you know, making friends with peers, and this has come up. This might be really important information for us to know when we're, you know, working on interventions and plans to support them. So the DESI UIS and VOCAL data, and of course, both of those have to stand for something. So let me just make sure I have it right. So UIS stands for the Early Warning Indicator System. And VOCAL stands for Views of Climate and Learning. And so this is actually data that we get straight from DESI. This is gathered by them and, you know, created by them and given to the districts. So myself and Karen and Bill Fish were actually able to attend a training last month on that, on really how can we use this data? What's important about this data and how can we use it to best support all of our students? Safety and Security Procedures Training. So at the beginning of the school year, although it's a difficult training, I have to be honest, to sit through. We do sit through this training with Sergeant Jack Richman and Officer Mark. I'm going to mess. Thank you very much. very much, who are phenomenal in the training that they deliver to us and the whole team that they have with them on safety procedures and our security procedures and how we respond in those moments, unfortunately, that are real and happening in some districts, but really to make sure that we feel really, you know, prepared to make sure that we're safe and that we're able to keep our students safe. So all of us attended that at the beginning of the school year. Another great thing that we were actually able to purchase through one of the grants was the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. So they have unbelievable training opportunities available for all of our staff, and as a district now that is able to partner with them, staff at any time can actually go onto their website and access any of their webinars. So if a staff member really wants to, you know, enhance their learning around, you know, trauma-sensitive classroom and different strategies they can be using, if they want to learn a little bit more about anxiety, if they want to learn a little bit more, really around any of, any of those areas, they can actually go on and they can sign up for their own training. And what's great about it is that the times that it's offered, sometimes it is offered during the school day, but they actually have access to the webinars for a couple days after it's happened, so they can really go on and watch it at any time and enhance their own learning. Additionally, through the Mass Partnership for Youth, we're eligible to have five in-person workshops where a trainer, you know, that's, that's an expert in certain areas, will come in and will do training with all of our staff. So we actually were able to have our first one on November 1st, we were able to have a great one from someone that came in to do strategies for creating a trauma-sensitive classroom, that was really able to talk to our teachers and say, what are some things you can be doing in your classroom? Let's not just talk about trauma, let's talk about what are some actual skills and strategies that you can use in your classroom to make it trauma-sensitive. And then on March 17th, we are doing a training for all of our staff around vicarious trauma and self-care. And we try to talk about it a lot at school, I don't think we talk about it enough, but, you know, with, with what's happening with some of our students, it has effects on some of our staff. And so it's really important for staff to make sure that they are taking care of themselves and for them to understand what is vicarious trauma, what does that look like, and how can we manage it on our own so we can be there for our students. So some of the fun stuff, you know, through these grants and different opportunities we've had, we've been able to purchase a lot of different fun things that we've used across all of the schools. So we were able to purchase sensory kits for all adjustment counselors, it looks a little bit different at each age level, but different manipulatives that can be used, fidget tools, stress balls, different things like that that students can be using that could be helpful for them in the class to better focus. SEL instructional resources for the classrooms, some of the schools were able to purchase standing desks, some of those classroom cruisers, as you could see the picture of it right We were able to purchase journals for the high school and for Pierce, we have a lot of students that definitely like to do some writing, and so it was great to be able to purchase journals for them to be able to use that. Therapy balls, and then as I mentioned before, we were able to purchase several copies of the Trauma Sensitive Classroom. And then in the spring, we're actually going to be doing a book club around that, that teachers will be able to read the book and really have some good classroom, good conversations with other classroom teachers about how they can implement some of those strategies. So what's next? So different things, again, all these things that we have done, but it's important to talk about kind of what's next and what we're hoping to be doing in the future. So continued training for teachers on using the SEL data to inform practice and determine necessary interventions and supports for individual students, and that's also continuing with training for counselors and for administration on how we can most effectively use that data. Development of tiered SEL supports within MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred System of Supports for Mental and Behavioral Health. So as you can see with, with the triangle and with the tiers, I was talking a little bit about the Tier Two interventions that we were doing, you know, I think we've, Tier One is where like Calm Classroom would fall, all those things that we're, we're implementing constantly within the class. Tier Two is students with some of those risk factors that might happen, and then Tier Three are more of those students that are at high risk. In-depth training for educators on the provision of tiered interventions and supports within the classroom, and then training on an application of trauma-informed practice and classroom instructional implications. So really trying to continue the training that we're doing for trauma-sensitive schools.
And that's pretty much all we've got for you. But we are, we are definitely ready to, what was the?
Oh, I have to do the old tab.
We are definitely ready to like have a conversation, answer any questions that we can, but again, couching it in the, in the idea that we're not, we're not experts in all of this, so we'll do our best to answer questions that you might have and then certainly get answers to any that we aren't able to answer. And it's just awful good to see some familiar faces here. So that's it, that's our show.
Thank you, thank you so much. So yeah, I'd like to, if I may, open it up to see if there are any questions or comments from any school committee members, either online or in person, that you might want to add at this point, or if you want to wait until there's further, any comments here?
No, not at the moment. Great job, by the way, thank you so much.
Well, I can just say that I was a school adjustment counselor for 20 years in a different district, and so every time I hear these presentations and, and hear the data that everyone presents, you know, I know firsthand how important it is to help children be ready to learn, and when they come into school stressed out or distressed by something that's going on, they really can't learn, they can't absorb anything, and they really do need an opportunity to have someone to talk to or have a relaxation time to kind of get ready for the day. So it's such an important piece of what we do as educators, so I salute you all.
Thank you. And any of our school committee members online, anybody have any comments at this point? All right, thank you. So I'll open it up if there's anyone in the room who'd like to, why don't you come on up, and if you'll just share your, your name and your address, please.
Hi, everyone, Colleen McCarthy, I live at 108 Gulliver Street. I have three children in the Cunningham schools, I have a rising fourth grader who at some point will be in Pierce. I just want to commend the teachers and the principals, you're doing an incredible job. I think I probably speak for the community where I think that, you know, we're all incredibly impressed with the work that you're doing. With that being said, I do feel that there's an opportu, like, I want to point out that this is not work that, you know, should be you and you alone. As a parent, I think there's an opportunity for us to support these efforts, certainly at home. With that being said, I, I guess this is more of a question for the administration. You know, I, I do think, as I look at some of the unfortunate and unfavorable press that we've had, most recently in June around lockdowns and the potential trauma that children experienced, was there any communication with parents about what went on and what they were going to be experiencing on day one, upon return to Pierce? And the reason I say that is, I think there was opportunity to speak to our children about that because there was a lot of questions, and I think starting day one, no one really knew what was going on. And I understand the legal implications of that, but I don't think that the schools should feel that they need to handle this alone. So just wanted to open that up to the school committee and see if there was an opportunity to talk about that, because I think it's kind of the elephant in the room, right?
Well, thank you. I, I don't know, Superintendent Sheehan, if you would like to address that in the administration?
Yes, we, we did not handle that situation alone, we actually worked with a renowned counselor who has worked with school, school districts across the country, name is Maria Trazee. She has guided us through a number of crises in the schools over the past couple of decades. And Maria actually provided guidance to the staff and the administration around addressing concerns relative to the lockdown.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly appreciate that, and I think, I think the point that I'm trying to make is, as a community, I think there is opportunity for the community to be pulled into that conversation. And I understand there is legal components to this, and, but kids talk, right? And these concerns were shared among children returning to school on the first day, and in order to support the effort of the hard work that you all are doing in our schools, and again, it is absolutely commendable, and I appreciate this so much, I have a child who's a complete, he's very sensitive, he's a complete empath, and as I thought about how I, as a parent, would talk to him going back to school, they watch the news, they see helicopters, they see, while I appreciate that there was counsel provided to administration and the schools and coaching, I, I think if we were to do this again, I would hope that the parents would be better informed so that we could support the efforts of, of, you know, really what the schools are doing with our children. Because what I've heard from parents in the community is there was, you know, kids were coming home and they were confused, and there were a lot of really scared children in the building on June 12th, and they were doing things that, you know, were traumatic, you know, in terms of privacy, and I just think that there is an opportunity, we just have to remember that you're not doing this alone. There are parents that are very engaged, and I think that's one thing that's abundantly clear within Milton, is that we are very supportive and we want to be engaged. So I just wanted to, to kind of make that comment and, you know, just really understand if there was a sense that, you know, maybe there was a missed opportunity to engage the, the community.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yeah, appreciate that.
May I, may I just add? May I just add a comment? Chair Rosemary. So I, we really appreciate that feedback, and I will tell you, after these incidences, we, we always come together and try to debrief and talk about how we can improve our communications and response to, to these situations. If, if I recall correctly, we, we did develop with Maria Trazee talking points for the teachers to use with these students. So we have consistent communications that are developmentally appropriate. And generally, we do send home talking points for parents, too. I, I think we, we did that at the time, I'm not recalling right now, but that's usually our, our regular practice is to send home information that is helpful to parents and how to talk to their children.
Yeah.
But we thank you for the, for the feedback.
Yeah, and I think, just, you know, I, as a parent, I think, appreciate that, and I think I have talking points that I, you know, I know my children, I know, like to think I know how to talk to them, I think there was an opportunity for the administration to communicate directly with parents. And I think as we look to create this, you know, this holistic view of a safe and supportive environment for our kids, we can't, you, you can't, we can't do this without expecting parent involvement or not involving parents. Because we're, you know, granted, you have our children most of the day, but when they're home and they're going on the bus in the morning, I'd like, as a parent, to know, understand what they're, what they're going to be faced with that day. So I just think there is an opportunity, I just want to call it out, but really, I just wanted to commend the team because hearing what you're doing from, in a school perspective and understanding my children, they're certainly going to benefit from your hard work. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yep.
Do we have anyone with a raised hand online, Stephanie? If there's anyone online who would, would like to comment or ask a question, feel free to raise your hand and you'll be promoted.
We're happy to, like, honestly, I'm happy to answer it. We know Jenny is too, like, happy, happy to.
Hi, Megan Walsh. I have a daughter at Cunningham and a daughter at Pierce Middle School. I guess I'm just looking for a little clarification here on, we, we're learning about DEI, SEL, and, what's the other one?
Personalized learning.
Personalized learning, thank you. And there's, I'm trying to understand how they all interconnect because there's a lot of focus, and I think the focus is tremendous, and again, like Colleen, I commend your efforts. But which one are we going with?
Right.
You know, that to me, and then we go with one and then focus on academics, like, that's the only thing that I feel is lacking, everything is, and believe me, social, I wish I had this when I was in high school. But again, it's, I'm just trying to understand how it all interconnects and then...
Good question.
Yeah.
It's a great question, and the, the visual that goes with the strategic plan, which I noticed that you do have committed to memory, I unfortunately do, has, like, the two circles on the bottom are equity and safe and supportive schools, and then intentionally built on top of that is the academic portion, is the personalized learning, but, but more than that, it's about teaching and learning. And I think that the most important thing for everyone to understand is that these are the foundational blocks upon which academic achievement and teaching and learning is possible, is made possible. They're not taking time away from academics, they're not taking time away from instruction, they're just the way we're doing business in our classrooms, right? So we're not, there's no specific, other than like a, at the elementary level, a second step lesson, which there's only four units, and I mean, it's not, you know, it's, we've been doing it for a long time, it's more about the way we handle your kids. It's what we know about your kids, it's how we get to know your kids, how we get to know you guys as families, how, how we know about your, you know, they talk about the invisible second backpack. Kids come to school with an actual backpack and it's full of pencils and pens, and then, and then there's an invisible second backpack that has all this stuff that they carry with them every single day. And when I grew up, nobody knew what my invisible second backpack held, nobody asked me, nobody cared, and I had to deal with my, my backpack myself. And the idea is to, to get our kids to the best possible place that they can be in learning, we've got to make sure we're helping them unpack whatever it is that they need to unpack. And it's, and it, I'll only speak from the safe and supportive world because that's my world right now. It all is my world, but that's what I'm talking about right now. It, it is totally on a case-by-case basis, you know, there is the universal approach, and yes, we're trying to help teachers be as trauma-informed as possible, and we're trying to look at school culture and climate and how kids feel when they walk in the doors, and why do they feel that way, and what can we do to improve upon that. But a lot of this work is based on what the kids are coming to us with, and it's totally different for, for every child. You might have 24 first graders in your class, and, you know, 11 of them are, you know, cooking with gas, and they're pretty good, and they, you know, they don't have a lot in that second backpack, but three of them have a ton in there, and so we're going to do that Tier Two and Tier Three work with those kids and make sure that our, all of our kids have this sort of universal foundation. So a really long answer to your question is, we're doing all three because we have to do all three, but the safe and supportive is, it's just, it's the foundation, it's the approach, it's the way we're coming at teaching and learning, which ultimately is our job.
So if we have additional resources that are hired for this, what, what is their overall responsibilities in implementing this within the school systems?
So, so I, I was able to, to secure a DESI grant that last year provided the district $150,000, this year $127,000, and I just asked for an additional 30, so fingers crossed that we get it. But that allowed, at the elementary level, Glover School houses a couple different awesome special education programs, but one of them is the STEP program, it's for students with significant social, emotional, behavioral challenges. So I was able to hire an additional adjustment counselor, and that adjustment counselor is available, those are kids that come from across the district, they're not just Glover kids, that adjustment counselor is available on demand. And not every kid needs an on-demand adjustment counselor, that's Tier Three, right? If you think about that pyramid, that's that Tier Three, that's that top triangle, where we don't know what's going to happen minute to minute because there's a lot, there's a lot of trauma, there's a lot of stuff, and so that adjustment counselor is available for those kids from the minute they get there till the minute they go home, which is amazing, we've never had that before in the program. So that's just one example of what funds might support in terms of staffing, like the... just one example of what funds might support in terms of staffing, like the, 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 what they say is 1 to 250 in terms of a recommended ratio for students to adjustment counselors. And I can tell you, we're nowhere near that. So, the idea of bringing on more people who have more expertise in working with kids who have been impacted by trauma, and let's remember, we've all been traumatized, like this pandemic has traumatized all of us in some ways, and some, some more than others. That, that would be the ultimate goal, is getting, getting as many people in our schools that are equipped with the skills to help support our kids with whatever comes their way, you know? And, and we can anticipate it. It's, it's not like other things. Like, something could happen tomorrow to a kiddo in my school, and, you know, I have to be ready, and we all have to be ready. And we, we didn't know it was coming, but we've got to be ready, and we've got to have the staff equipped with the skills to be able to handle that kid.
I think just to piggyback on what Colleen said, too, and I'm experienced as, as a parent, I was heavily engaged in Cunningham. I love the teachers there, I love the administration. I'm a single mother, I am on a crisis response team and can be deployed at any point, so it's important for me to have that communication with, with the school administration. I also have a daughter who's hearing impaired. That doesn't happen in middle school. I mean, and even trying to get into the classroom, it's like, oh, only if, like, you know, you have issues or the child is suffering. And I think that's the most important thing, that there needs to be more transparency and engagement with the parents at the middle school and high school, because there's that lack of, I mean, my daughter, I can't drop her off at the front door, she would kill me. My other daughter, like, she's still, you know, kissing me goodbye. So, there's, there's that level that there's a disconnect with the parents. And, you know, like Colleen said, they come home and they have all these stories, and, you know, sometimes it's drama, sometimes it's like real serious stuff that, how do we handle that? And we should, you know, be able to reap these benefits of, you know, some of what you're discussing here. So, it's just, I, I think it's important that parents really need to be engaged and, you know, understand some of this, and maybe it helps to have parent advocates that also go through this. So, I think it's wonderful that there's a focus on that. Again, if I had this in high school, I could be a lot wealthier. But, again, yes, thank you. I commend your efforts. I'm just hoping that we continue to engage parents, focus on academics, and, you know, really work on the student as a whole, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Good evening. I think it would be disappointing if, after that detailed and impressive presentation, nobody had questioned.
Can always count that out.
I stood up in that regard.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Leroy Walker. How much do you want to know? Town meeting member, precinct 10, Fort Worth, Truman Parkway.
That's great, thank you.
That's good enough?
That's great, thank you.
So, I think that, first of all, anything that Principal McDavid is associated with is destined for success, so good job on choosing her as the lead. And Ms. Beliveau, kudos to you as well on the number of grants you've obtained, because that always relieves pressure on the budget and allows for additional resources to be allocated. So, it sounds like we're off to a great start. So, the, the questions are more, and I understand that when you talk about a strategic plan, the overarching strategies make perfect sense, and there's not much to argue with there. So, the question then moves to, what is, what are the success metrics? What does success look like with regard to SEL? And also, in terms of accountability, who's, who's responsible for what? What roles do the teachers have? What roles do the adjustment counselors have? And as we've heard this evening, what roles do parents have, or, or could they have, or should they have? So, I, I think these, these forums are important, but I don't, it, it's important to do the follow-up as well, which is, okay, so, it's only a dialogue if you say something, we say something, and then, then we find out what you thought about what we said. It's not a dialogue unless there's, there's that third component. But in, in this case, I, I'd like to spend time this evening hearing about what you see as the success metrics. What does success look like? One pretty impressive stat was that if done well, this could result in an 11 percentile point improvement in academic performance.
Yeah.
I'd be really interested in that because that's significant. And, and also, how you're defining academ- academic performance, but if you're talking about percentile points, you must be talking about standardized tests. So, that, that's something that we should certainly focus on. But again, how do we get from here to there? How do we measure what's happening or isn't happening? What should we do differently? So, I had a whole host of questions, but I'll, I'll leave you with that one, because I'd like to hear some response on that. Thanks.
I'm happy to, to start, and Jenny can chime in, anybody can chime in, but absolutely outstanding question and a very important one, right? Because I think we've had academic accountability forever. I've been teaching for 20 years, and somebody's been looking at my test scores for 20 years. But I can tell you that in my educational career, we have only just started collecting data, actual data, actual measurable data about SEL. And the reason is because so much of it is hard to measure. It's really hard to say to a second grader, it's hard to put a number on how do you feel about school? How connected do you feel to your teachers? I can, I can ask them all to say, a trusted adult, and I can say 96% of Glover School has somebody in there that they can trust and talk to. Is that a measure of success? Is that something that we're doing well? I would say yes. Does it create accountability? Yes, because the folks who aren't somebody's trusted adult, maybe are questioning why they aren't somebody's trusted adult, but it's not as measurable. It's not an A, B, C, or D multiple-choice thing. It's just not. It, it's, it's humanity, and it also fluctuates. If you have kids, like I have kids, how they feel one day is very different than how they feel the next day, right? So, they might come in one day and they had a great recess with their friends, and they love school. And then the next day, Suzie doesn't want them to play. And then all of a sudden, they're like, I hate school, I hate it here, this whole thing stinks. So, if I'm gonna ask that kid one day, and then ask that kid the next day, I'm gonna get a totally different answer. And so, there is just an inherent level of subjectivity when it comes to measuring and assessing safe and supportive schools. That said, we have data at our fingertips, and we started with Intellispark, mostly because it was one that was being used across the country. It came to us with, with some pretty rave reviews, and we gave it a shot. The challenges with Intellispark are real, in the sense that it doesn't really give us a whole lot of info, it gives us information, it's good, it's actionable, it flags individual students. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't allow us to compare ourselves to neighboring districts. It doesn't allow us to compare ourselves to the state of Massachusetts or national data, because we're one of the only schools in Mass that's using it, and we're, we're looking at data from Tulsa, Oklahoma. And, and so, that's why we're really excited about the data that we're probably moving towards, which is the EWS and FOCAL data that Jenny talked about. Because that is given to every student in Massachusetts in grades four, eight, and 10. So, it will give us data, and it's all about school climate, culture, connectedness. How do kids feel when they're in our schools? And it is standardized, it is not subjective, it's not given by the teacher. And I, I will then be able to say, how does Glover School compare to Collycock, Cunningham, Tucker, the district, the state? And that will then allow us to start making SMART goals, right? Measurable, attainable goals that say, you know what? You know, 85% of our kids feel a sense of belonging. Next year, we're gonna get it to 90. Here are the strategies that we're gonna use, here's what we're going to try, there's our accountability measure, and we're gonna check back in and see how we did. Again, with that caveat, that it is so subjective, right? It is not a simple 2 plus 2 is 4, it's never gonna be 3, and it's never gonna be 5. It's just not that. So, so we're excited about that data and, and what that can do. Next week at school committee, we're gonna be presenting some of the Intellispark data, because it is the tool that we have right now. And I'll be there again next week, sharing, sharing some of the data. And so, the community will get to see some of the trends that are interesting. They sort of are going across all four elementaries, and then there's a different set of trends at the middle and high. So, I agree that we need to engage the community and families with this data and help them understand not only where are we, but what are we doing about it, and where are we going with it. So, I look forward to SEL data becoming more of a part of the overall data conversation. You know, years ago, Leroy, when you were sitting on school committee, Vivu got up and she shared data presentations that were phenomenal. But was there a lick of SEL data in them? There wasn't. So, we're moving in the right direction. We're collecting that data, we're, we're, we're asking the right questions about how kids feel in school, and about what we can do differently to make their experience better. But we're, 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 we're on our way.
Thank you, Karen. And, and I'll just add to that, Leroy, that at, at a recent school committee meeting, I think it may have been two or three meetings ago, that Vivu did come present the findings of a new metrics advisory team that has been formed. Because what, what we recognize is that the strategic plan that was approved last spring needed metrics to be attached to it, to sort of know how we're, how we're doing with, with our plans. And so, the metrics advisory team have been working together, a number of staff in the district since last spring, to present a series of, of metrics. And, and it, there's still some work to do to, to get that down. I, I would love to see a data dashboard, if we could pull one off for the district. Because, and, and the conversation at that meeting was really about that if we're being successful with all three of these strategic plan goals, then the data will show it. That the results of our, of our MCAS scores, the results of our SATs, and results of our AP exams, you know, all of those academic measures across all of the different groups of students that we have in the district will, will show the improvement that, that we're looking for. So, you, you're very right, that, that, you know, it's something that, that we, is still a work in progress, but we have, I don't know if, if Selena from Strategic Planning, or, or Lizzie, I see your hand is up, if you have anything further to add.
Well, I was just gonna point out that in addition to the standardized testing data, including our formative assessment data, we also, and, and then, of course, the self-reporting assessments, which is what Principal McDavid was speaking to, we also have additional data around sort of attendance, you know, students being referred, the need for different services for students. And so, I think that those are also things that are being tracked all the time. And part of this effort, as I understand it, too, is to kind of merge some of this in the service of understanding where our students are at. I think that's so important, and it looks different at the different grade levels. But I think that, as you were saying, Chair Rosemary, about a data dashboard, like, we have been getting, you know, these great data presentations, and I really, really appreciated that metrics advisory team presentation a couple of weeks back. So, I do encourage the community to view that meeting if you didn't have a chance, because it did lay out sort of where we're trying to go. But I, I think that there's a lot of this data out there, but, you know, it hasn't always been recognized as SEL-related data, or data that tells us about our safe and supportive schools. So, I think, you know, this is, this is the work that's underway. And I guess while I'm talking, I'm just gonna say, I really appreciate Jenny and Karen, your presentation, and your, you know, being here tonight to help us understand this topic from the most important vantage point, which is you're interacting with students day in and day out, and that's really why we're all here. So, thank you.
Yes, and Chair Rosemary, and if I can just chime in.
Please.
I, I think, you know, it's unfortunate that just because sort of the limits of time, and, you know, if we met and sort of were able to look at the strategic plan as a whole, we probably would be here for about five hours, so we could dig in deeply and look at everything. But one of the things that the, I think, which you've already stated this, this evening, is that the strategic plan does sort of look at the three areas, and there's a theory of action embedded in the strategic plan. And that is, if we move these three concentric circles in the right, you know, direction, if we continue to do this work, we are gonna see progress overall, academic progress, right? But also, the metrics team is doing a good job at starting to look at data more comprehensively. So, we look at the way our young, our, our students are doing in terms of the academic achievement, but also look at our schools, and how are our schools doing in terms of the environment, in terms of how students are feeling? This, this is self-reported data that we're gonna, we're hoping to be able to look at more comprehensively around the safety and how, and, and sense of belonging, how are students feeling? And that is gonna, the theory of action there is that if we do that well, which you heard very well stated from Jenny and Karen today, and thank you for doing that, and, and really setting the context for why this work matters when we think about academic achievement. I think if we do all of this, we are gonna be able to see the increases in those academic, you know, standards that we care about, that we've been tracking over time, that we know that, you know, lead to later success in life. And in those metrics, that metrics presentation, we're also looking at college readiness, in our college, you know, our achievement in college. Are they graduating college? Because what's the point if we do all this work, but then they don't succeed at the other end? And so, we are gonna be able to look more comprehensively if indeed this theory of action, right, that we have set for ourselves, does, if we do the work, we're gonna see the results, and we now have sort of the metrics, we're starting to build those metrics, to make sure that we're constantly monitoring and looking at that work. And then, if something's not working the way that we thought, then maybe our theory of action's incorrect, so we have to go back and look at it. But we're able to, to have that, that cycle there, and to be able to do the work, I think, more holistically, and really thinking about our students and everything that they need in order to be successful, not only right now, but later in life. So, I do encourage everyone to please look at that presentation, and really think about these forums as only one piece of a bigger whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maran.
You guys kind of piqued my interest with the dashboard, because this is something I'm very interested in, most recently with my daughter in middle school, who came home with an excellent report card, six A pluses and two As.
Oh, boy.
But her MCAS scores did not reflect six A pluses and two As. So, my concern is, okay, self-reporting, I'm now, I see her, I know she's not challenged, and that is very frustrating. I want to be proud of my child, but it's hard to be proud of your child when you're not seeing her really challenged and, like, the academic rigor. So, I would hope that at some point, and I've talked to a ton of parents who are in the same boat, that I'd rather my child's get, you know, A minuses and Bs and be challenged than A pluses. And so, self-report- So self-reporting, I ask her, she's like, "Oh, yeah, I'm challenged." She's not. You know, so self-reporting, I think, is, it's very skewed. She doesn't, she wants to maintain her A pluses and As, but how, you know, I'd really like to take that and these students that are doing like exceptionally well, but their MCAS scores are mediocre, how, how do we match those? You know, so i- if we can take the dashboard, I think it's important for us to look at the students that aren't doing well, the students that are meeting, and the students that are exceeding. And that's what I think parents are looking for, um, a, a buy-in that you're also going to take care of the academic achievers. Because that's, I, I feel like that's missing at least in, in the middle school. Um, so if, if we have a dashboard like that, is that something that you'd be willing to look at and then see, okay, we have all these kids getting straight As, but their MCAS scores are, you know, barely meeting expectations? So, how do we gauge the gap there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Megan, I don't know, Karen, if you have any experience with that, seeing that kind of... I mean, it put you on the spot.
I can tell you that Nora McDabbitt gets all As and A pluses and that MCAS report came home and I was like, "You gotta be kidding me!" And I became the parent that I tried to help everybody not be. So I hear you, both personally and professionally. Um, the, the E-WIS da- data dashboard that Jenny mentioned is, is actually super fascinating. I just presented it to the entire full leadership team, because it does do some of that. It actually tracks, um, attend, it, it, it puts it all together in one piece. So how are, are they attending school? Have they ever been referred for anything? Um, have they taken, you know, at the high school level, AP classes, like all of that? And then it also puts in all of their MCAS scores and it gives you this like sort of overall picture of a student. What's cool about it is as long as that student's been in Massachusetts, we can see it even if they've been in a different town. So all the kids that move in, we can go in there and we can say, you know, how have they been doing, um, up until they're moving to Milton? Um, so that is, that is one piece of, of a dashboard that is already in existence. It does not include our report cards themselves. Um, and I think that, I think you raise a really good question and I think it's an important dialogue that, um, school leaders and, and teachers and, and everyone should be having. Um, I know that it's report card season at the elementary level and we just got done with a very heated conversation about, you know, what is progressing and, and, and how to define it. And, you know, it's always been an albatross. Um, and unfortunately, um, so much of it is still so subjective. And so what one teacher thinks is progressing, the next year's teacher is going to consider meeting. And then this teacher's gonna say, "But that's it." And, and, and so it is still a human profession where we're kind of also basing our grades on not only the data, but also, you know, how that student shows up every day and how hard that student works and all that good stuff. And MCAS doesn't look at any of that. It only looks at, did you get A on number one and B on number two? Um, but I think it's a really good question and it's certainly something I'm happy to bring back to the leadership team and, and kind of talk about calibration.
Oh, I would love the dashboard, 'cause I've been doing a ton of research. Because obviously, if I pulled my kids out, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that I don't have, that I'm going to have to put into a different education. So having to go into the various, you know, um, websites and pull that, extract that information, um, it's very enlightening and I hope more parents, you know, go into the district scorecards and see everything. Um, because you do see correlations between, I've looked at absence rates and, you know, um, but also seeing the increase in MCAS scores when you get to high school, is that because of advanced placement? Is that, you know, there are so many questions that come about and it's, it's just really important for us to, to be engaged and, you know, a- along the whole path of our children's learning. And if we had something like that available, you know, I'd, I'd be able to have a better conversation and then commend my daughter for getting the grades that she's getting and not be concerned that she's not being challenged, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, that also touches on our personalized learning goal, which is, is really, you know, a goal to be able to meet children where they are and provide, uh, challenges for them that are appropriate to their, their own levels. And, um, it's, that's, and the other, our third goal in our strategic plan. And, um, I know there was talk, um, after our, uh, personalized learning forum like this about doing, um, some coffees around that topic at our, um, individual schools. So, um, I know, um, uh, Assistant Superintendent Shan, uh, was talking about setting those up and, and, um, I think it might give parents more of an opportunity to have, um, dialogue directly with their children's principals and, you know, so that folks can hear about, you know, what they're seeing and, and ask questions directly. Um, so thank you for asking that.
Um, hi, I'm Pony Stackpool. Um, I have two children, well, one, in, who is still in the Milton Public School System, who is, I love to report doing fabulously well in high school.
Awesome.
And I am beyond grateful to the teachers. My other, who I was here at the last meeting I mentioned, I pulled from Milton Public School due to the disastrous education he received at the middle school. Speaking to what I believe Colleen said with regard to the communication, it wasn't there. It wasn't understanding, it wasn't empathetic. All right. So I'm devastated by that. That's why I'm coming to these now every single time. I wanna say to you, Ms. Mc- Mrs. McDabbitt, I haven't seen you in a long while.
I know.
You bring joy. When you speak, you show your passion and I bet every parent here truly appreciates that, 'cause I know I do.
Thank you.
So I wanna thank you for that and for the presentation. You, you exude it. And as an educator myself, to have a principal, I have one actually similar to you, so I'm very blessed. It really helps in everything I do every single day and I go to school wanting to be there because I know I'm supported. So I know that that was your purpose here.
Yes.
Um, that presentation, it will be shared? I'm sorry, I missed the beginning, so I didn't see that. That will be shared, super. Um, when I, I guess what I'm trying to say, and I'm sorry, I'm all over the place because I was here at the last meeting, um, is there gonna be an academic forum? Because I would love to see something very similar to this with our academic scores. Because I think, as you can see from a lot of the parents who have spoken at this, we're interested in that. We know Milton has, has taken significant drops, more so than some other communities around us. We'd like that data. We'd like to know your opinion as to why Milton is having this happen, again, to greater degrees than some other communities. Um, I'd like to step back to the last meeting, if you don't mind, which was about personalized learning. And was it Ms. Tabor? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing her name.
Cindy Tabor.
She was here. Yes. Um, when she spoke about personalized learning, um, I know several of us questioned, um, was there any data done on that? Were there any studies that showed that it was successful? Do you wanna know what she told us? She said, "Google it." Right? Is, is it right? Um, sorry, Lizzie, I don't know, I'm forgetting your last name. But she literally said, "Google it." All right? When I have an expert here speaking to us about personalized learning, she needs to have that data in front of her. She needs to have those studies that show us parents that this has been successful, that there are other communities. We asked, can you tell us communities where this has been implemented and is successful? And she couldn't. That's why I take my time to be here, to hear and listen from the experts. I want that at their fingertips. I don't want to have to Google it. But guess what? I did. And I know that other members who are here today also did. And I know that they actually made phone calls to different superintendents. That's not our job when you're presenting this data to us, to get our buy-in. And that's what you need, you need community buy-in. And I hate to say it, but we are a somewhat divided community and we saw that these past two years. But what we're united in is we want what's best for our children. We really do. And I think one other thing that I can say unequivocally, 'cause I hear it from everybody, and I'm looking at you, Ms. McDabbitt, because you are one of the, and I'm sorry, I don't know you or I would look... She's lovely. But, but we are grateful and thankful for you, because you did help our children get through this. But decisions that were made beyond you are reasons why they suffered and why they suffered emotionally and academically. And we want to understand the steps and SEL, yes, we can say those are foundational, but I do want to know, as a parent, how are we going to bridge those academic gaps? And we can all say, you know, we're about the whole child and we are, but the whole child does include that academic piece. I want to be sure that when that second grader goes to third grade, they know how to read. Because you wanna know what creates emotional struggle and behavioral problems? That child who is there trying to read this book that cannot read! All right? They cannot read! So we can have adjustment counselors and guidance counselors. I want literacy specialists and I want math specialists to help them so they feel confident. My child does not feel confident anymore. I pulled him from a system that failed him! And I am dealing with this emotionally every single day and it breaks my heart. And guess what? Two years ago, I said it was happening. And I reached out again and again and I emailed and I begged for help. And everybody, including a former head of the school committee, said, "You people, you people want your kids back in school." Yes, I want my kid in school. I want Ms. McDabbitt educating my child and I am grateful to you. But I want these forums to be a place where all of the data is spread and where we all have a voice. 'Cause I know everybody, you may disagree with my position, but you love your kids and you want that emotional piece. And I will tell you right now, and I'm just gonna tell you a story if it's okay, if I have five minutes. You have five minutes? So, I'll take it. So I teach in Quincy. I'm an ESL teacher, okay? I teach, I think, one of the, the most challenged traumatized populations that there are. I teach immigrant children who come here and something that happens frequently in Quincy is they are born in the United States and then sent back to, to grandparents in China. And then at five years old, they come back, they don't know parents, they don't know siblings, they don't know language, they are so out of place. And we throw them into classrooms with little or no support. And I see it every single day and I see, and it breaks my heart. And I know the impact of being the hand that reaches out. And I speak Mandarin and I teach mostly Chinese children. And I am that hand that is extended to show that it's okay and that we're here to help you and we care about your emotion. But with every one of those children, what makes them confident and eventually be able to stand on their own is the fact that I'm teaching them language. They're learning that academic piece. And that academic piece is as foundational as the emotional, because when children go to school, they want to succeed. So I beg of you, when you come here to us, have all of the data and understand that we do, we all come from different positions, we all see different things. But again, ultimately, we're grateful for you to sit here and volunteer your time, 'cause I'll tell you right now, it was all I could do today to drive here and come and sit through this meeting. It was all I could do. So I am grateful, but I'm willing to fight and battle for my kids. And I choose that word intentionally, because it has been a battle these last two years. And in my life, it continues to be for one of my children. So I will be at every single meeting, but I ask you, present that academic data for us.
Well, our next meeting is a big data presentation by Vivu, who's coming back a second time this year. Um, this is the first year where she has done two presentations before January. Um, she presented earlier this year on the results, um, of, at the end of last year and she's coming back next month, uh, at our next meeting to present on the fall data. Um, so please do come and listen and, and, and we welcome your, your feedback and, and input.
All right. Well, I would like then, um, as I mentioned in the beginning, we were told we would be presented with the studies that were done for personalized learning, what they are and what schools. I know several people have reached out already to Superintendent Sheehan regarding that. And I, I would like to have that data if it's available. Um, and also about the ROI, 'cause I just looked that up too.
Oh, yeah.
One dollar to eleven.
Yeah.
Where's that come from? I can't really find where the, the data is there.
I will find it for you.
If you can find it, I would, I would be grateful.
I told you, I'm not good at the ROI.
I understand. Well, I tried, th- that's the, I guess, to, to your point earlier, there, there's not a lot of data, but then it's very difficult to say one dollar spent equals eleven. I mean, let's be honest. Or, you know, one dollar spent equals eleven percent growth in academics. 'Cause we know that really is not going to be easily measurable. It's not, you know? Um, thank you for listening to me. I mean, again, I'm just an impassioned parent and educator and always grateful to you because you made a difference in my child, Ms. McDabbitt. He still loves you too.
I miss him very much.
Thank you.
I'll send it by.
Last time I saw him, he was already towering over me.
I see Dr. Miranda has her hand up.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to respond, uh, to, to that ask. I do think that, um, you know, and this is, I think, something for us to, um, take into consideration as the school committee and to think about these forums and how can we even bring more data? I think to contextualize some of our conversations, I do appreciate the ask for the data. I think, um, going back and definitely, I think, um, I encourage folks to attend next week's, uh, school committee, uh, meeting, because we are gonna see more data, which I think is great. And one of the things that I think, um, the connection that we need to make in terms of personalized learning, that we have been able to, because of some of the strategies that have been taking place in the classroom, uh, we are sort of meeting, uh, kids, students where they're at. We understand that there was unfinished learning, you know, there was a pandemic that happened that none of us were prepared, uh, to take on. And, you know, there's not, there is an agreement as to, you know, did we handle it right? Did we not? And it was very individualized depending on your family composition and what your family needed. Um, but regardless of that, one of the things that, uh, I think, because we do have this focus on personalized learning that we have been able to do, is really be able to understand, um, where students are and be able to, um, focus, right? Sort of the intervention of what we're doing in the classroom based on what they need so that we can catch them, so we can get them to where we need them to be. And the data, um, that we have seen has shown progress in the right direction. So I would just, you know, and I, again, I, I listened to, to the last speaker, and I'm sorry, I did miss your name, um, but I listened to it and say, you know what, it's up to us to make that connection and make sure that the community understands it and that the community sees it. But I do hope more folks attend next week to be able to learn even more, um, and to see that we are making gains, um, to close that gap of that unfinished learning. Uh, we are doing it. And I think it, as, as a result, a, a lot of it is, is a result of this personalized learning approach, um, that we're taking. Otherwise, we wouldn't sort of be, um, you know, tailoring things to what students need and everybody would get the same thing. And the reality is not every student is, is, needs the same intervention, uh, academic intervention. I'm not talking about SEL here, I'm talking about academics. Um, so, um, just, uh, just wanted to make that connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miranda. I'm looking at the time, we have one minute left. Um, is, is there any final comments or questions that...
I, I've heard something that the Massachusetts Teachers Association are opposed to personalized learning. Is there anything that you can speak to on that?
No, this is the first time I've heard that.
Can you, um, release the superintendent, um, survey results as well? Is that possible? Like what people, 'cause you voted like for academics or what your priority was? And so if SEL was like a priority versus like academics, like we could see a little bit more what the parents' feedback was? You know, in the comments of like, what basically like, what are parents, you know, being transparent and knowing kind of where our kids are at is also knowing how, first being surveyed, kind of what our results are from that? Is that possible? I mean...
Right, that should be possible, right?
I'm just curious, you know, you, if budget-wise, you know, we're putting all this on, you know, certain things and academics is a priority for the community, maybe we should kind of look at how we're, you know, kind of prioritizing for next year, you know, what... Yeah, resources like reading, math specialist, if like, like, you know, I think, um, the current feedback's just as important as the kid's feedback that we get from surveys. You know, 'cause I mean, we are, um, as involved in, you know, and I'd love to be a part of any conversation that's being had with my child regarding anything emotional. And I would, I love Glover and McDabbitt. So I, I, I know that, uh, the teachers there are open, but, you know, um... you know, just as important it is to be a part of those conversations, I think it's important for us to be, you know, know what our survey results were, what we're looking for in the next superintendent, our academics being the primary focus, because I think that's what we're hearing. So if it's, there's, if everyone's saying social-emotional, then, you know, that's what it is. But, I mean, I'm just curious, you know, and I think it's being transparent as much as possible with the community.
Right. Well, 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 if, it wasn't a survey done to inform the community, it was to, to inform the, the screening committee that is hiring the superintendent? So it was, it, you know, I'd have to talk with the team about, about what we might be able to release with that, but we'll get back to that.
Then maybe a survey for the community that you are willing to release.
Pardon me?
Maybe like a survey for the parents, then.
Yeah, because, just to follow up on that, too, and I think, you know, ultimately, the school committee's job, right, is to set the goals as, as expected, I don't know, whatever the word is, by the community, right? So what are, what is Milton's goals? Like, what is the priority for the community? I mean, that's really your, essentially, your marching orders, right? So I think as a community, if, if we want to hear topics on X, to Allison's point, that's really, that's, those are your marching orders. That's part of what you volunteer to do. And I think that, you know, I second Allison's motion to hear, to hear that. And if it is SEL, it's SEL. If it's personalized learning, it's personalized learning. But what are we looking for in a superintendent? They're gonna be running the show.
And then it also helps put the budget together, too. And then you can say, okay, this is, you know, our, our kids need more emotional support. Here's how we're gonna add more money towards that. And which is great, because then you have community support. But if it's also that they need, you know, more teachers, or we need to pay a certain amount, or we need to hire interventionists, well, then, this is the community speaking as a whole as well, on the academic side.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Shan, did you have a comment to me?
Yes, I, well, I had my hand up, because we, I don't think we are hearing as well remotely, if someone's not up at the microphone. But I know we have, you know, we have notes being taken from the meeting, so we will refer to those. It was difficult to hear, you know, to hear the, the conversation without being at the, at the mic. But we'll, we'll be able to, 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 to see the notes from the end of the meeting. So appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Well, with that being said, we've reached the end of our, our meeting tonight, and want to thank you all for, for coming and, and participating and, and listening in. And please keep in touch with us, your thoughts, your questions. And attend, we have two more forums coming up, one in January, one in February, and we look forward to seeing you again then. And thank you again so much to Karen McDavitt and Jenny Bellevue for, for coming out tonight, and...
Thank you guys all for coming, and being here.
Good night, everyone.